Happy Monday Tuesday.
Thank you so much.
So.
Yeah.
Can you hear us online?
Hey folks, can you hear us online?
Yes, can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, thank you so much. And Matt, if I want to make the owl volume louder, just down here.
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
That's so smart.
Yeah.
Okay. My apologies for the delay, folks. But um.
Here, obviously.
Forrest, I think we're all good. If you want to call to order, we're recording and live streaming to YouTube.
It is three seventeen. And this meeting of Economic Development Advisory Board for Green County is called to order. Thanks to those of you who are joining us online. Thanks to our guests today. We'll begin with introductions and we'd like to start with those who are joining us remotely. And may we start with you, Karen?
Absolutely. Good afternoon. My name is Karen Guzman Newton and I'm on the Economic Diversification Board.
Megan?
I'm Megan McFall. I am on the Economic Advisory Board under Utesa University for Workforce Development.
Hello, I'm Kate Jaglen. I'm interim executive director at the Lab Free Health Clinic.
Abby?
Hi, my name is Abigail Taylor. I'm the executive director of C Kaven.
Denise?
Dennis.
Yes, this is Dennis, Economic Development Advisor Board, private sector.
Alyssa?
Elisa Martin, Planning Director for the county.
I don't know who's in the upper right hand corner.
This is, uh, this is our incoming administrative assistant, Sky White. Oh, sweet. Well.
Hi, thank you. Thought I'd pop in and just have a chance to see some of your faces before I have the opportunity to be there to start.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I've been working with Sky to get her on board and all that, and she's doing a great job. So I know she'll really be of benefit to the department. And she's just gonna kind of observe today.
Wonderful. And around the table, Chris Wilson, member of the board.
I'm Jaylee Bryant. I am the chamber seat of the board. Only such a first member of the board.
Chris Barrett, Strategic Development Director.
Ben Alter, Economic Development Specialist.
And Stephen, would you introduce yourself?
Stephen Stark, Superior Attorney Attorney.
I think so. That's just press.
That's just press. AI, thank you. I'm Cory.
I'm Cory Keeler. I'm with Grand County School District. Can we put a proposal in?
Randy Martin from Red Tail Air.
Bill Winfield, County Commissioner.
Great, welcome. And welcome to those of you who are not with us in the room. Beginning on the agenda, we've had introductions. This is an opportunity for those who want to declare conflicts of interest disclosures or ex parte communication. Hearing none, seeing none, citizens to be heard. Seeing some, but they're on the agenda. Presentations, we have none. So let us jump into the agenda. Welcome, Rob. Item A on the agenda is review of economic diversification activity and rural county grant definitions. Included in the packet was information about the rural county grant program. At the last meeting, Melissa asked them about one or two of the proposals and whether they might also qualify for their rural county grant. And so, um, or our two experts in the room are Ben and Chris. And I've alerted Ben that I might ask him to speak a little bit, and then we'll give Chris a rebuttal.
All right, Ben. Sure. So. So just to restate, so the question is, can these proposals be eligible for rural county grant funds?
In general, yes, that's the question because we had some, we know that we have a second application due later this summer, early fall. We've got a lot of what people leave our valid investments.
Sure.
But the money is limited. So if you could help us understand a little bit more from your own experience, the kind of projects that have been funded through the rural county grant program.
Sure. So, um, the state has changed the names of some programs. So there's some nuances that might be a little bit confusing. So there's the rural county grant program, used to be called Part A, it's now just called rural county grant program, no Part A or whatever. And that is a near guaranteed $200,000 distribution to rural counties of the fourth, fifth and sixth class of Grand County's fifth class rural county. So we do receive those funds near guaranteed because it requires an application and it requires a board that complies with the state bill that passed it, namely this board. Once we have those things in place, we put in application and unless we have some crazy bad ideas, they're going to provide those $200,000.
August said that we could potentially get up to 600,000.
I'm getting to that. Yep. So the rural county grant part is near guaranteed. It goes to those rural counties and those are for priorities that this board sets when it makes its application in the summer, late summer. And then throughout the year can tweak those priorities if it sees the need. It's otherwise basically given the job to expense those $200,000 over the course of that fiscal year. Now, later in the year, rural counties and now rural municipalities as well, it's become more competitive, have the opportunity to apply to the Rural Community Opportunities Grant. It used to be called Rural County Grant Part B, so it's a little confusing, but it's now called the RCO, Rural Community Opportunities Grant. So this is a competitive award. It's not guaranteed. Communities that are eligible can apply to up to $600,000. And rather than sort of like a laundry list of economic development priorities, this grant is more geared towards infrastructure development for economic development priorities and has really tried to focus on just one project. So, um, for example, in twenty, for the fiscal year 2022, Grand County won $300,000 for Pausu's 32 unit development at a Royal Crossing. So that's $300,000 that went all into one project. Similarly, this past year, many projects that did win big were for to co-working spaces in different rural counties. So while the rural county grant is something that this board takes about a year to deliberate over and receive proposals and, you know, kind of work through a laundry list of different priorities, the Rural Community Opportunities Grant is a one project, usually something that the state can kind of put its name on. It's usually going to have to do with fiscal infrastructure and I'll speak to maybe many priorities of economic development, but it's within a singular project. And as I mentioned with our last application, um, I, the state fully expects for you to have partners of these projects. But I would say that the rural county, the Rural Community Opportunity Grant, the competitive award, for up to 600,000. We have never applied without already knowing our project, our partners, having the budget and everything worked out. And I don't think that the state would be very receptive to an application and said, if you give us $600,000, we'll go out and find a partner. They're looking for something that's near shovel. How's that?
That's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it did get. Yeah. So in, in 2022, we did get 300,000 for Pausu's Skyline Arch Development. And we, uh, the, the grant cycle, the grant cycle for that grant is on a two-year basis. So unless we had finished it last year, we weren't eligible to apply this past winter and we weren't because Skyline Arch takes a while. But Pausu is on track to finish spending it by this fall, which means that we'll be eligible this fall to apply to that competitive award. And every time we've done it, we've applied to, just applied to the max 600,000. And I've gotten word from the state that things that did win 600,000 this last time were co-working spaces. And I think if this board wanted to get to know what they liked more, that they probably could have someone from the governor's office of economic opportunity speak to the board at some point in the future.
Any questions? Thanks, Ben. Of course. Next item, item B is discussion of methodology for prioritizing proposals. And one of the, uh, handouts that was sent distributed is this one. It's a reading sheet, understanding this was used during the Star's grant evaluation.
Actually, no. So that, so that is actually, um, this is a system that we use to help build the Star grant in the first place. We, August and I used this rating system back with the old Economic Diversification Advisory Council back in November of 2021. And this was to rank different diversification proposals. Um, and what ended up at the top was a business expansion grant program and a master planning process. And so we are now, we, we have embarked on one of those and we're embarking on the other. But all that is to say, this ranking process is what we use for board members to review different proposals of different varieties and rank them across different criteria. And then once we finish that, we'll probably take like a five minute recess. I will tabulate everything and then I will speak to the board about the averages that I'm seeing. Go ahead.
Can we, like, I, I don't know if you spoke to this. I feel like I didn't hear it, but economic diversification activity definition that we put in, like, I just, I feel like this is where it gets a little discombobulated of us, like, understanding what these grant money should really be going towards.
Sure, sure. Um, so when it comes to the definition of economic diversification activity, you know, it means an economic development activity that is similar to what the governor's office of economic opportunity has deployed in the past to stimulate diversified economic development. That's pretty vague. They've done a lot of things, you know, they've done all kinds of different business loans, rotating loans, grant programs. Frankly, I think Chris would be a better person to speak to when we're talking about economic diversification, you know, do we see, I guess, red flags of things that we think are really not eligible for these dollars or, you know, what fits the diversification definition better or worse?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the first hurdle to get past is the state statutory definition, which is economic diversification activity means an economic development activity that is reasonably similar to supplements or expands any economic program as administered by the state before economic opportunity. So that's the very first hurdle, but, but that's super vague. So really, I mean, we do have to check that box. But moving beyond that, we have to determine for ourselves, you know, what diversification priorities we have. So yeah, I guess it's been a struggle making that definition, you know, over time. And I think some of the proposals we have, like Small Business Development Center, you know, these are going to be a mix of diversified businesses and tourism businesses. That is probably going to be the same for a lot of what we would consider, you know. But it is kind of up to the board at this point, I get to decide how you want to define it or prioritize it above and beyond the statutory definition.
Well, I, I'm actually curious just because I haven't been around in, in reviewing what has been proposed either from third parties or within this board. Do you see anything that you think squarely doesn't fit within that diversification definition? So I know there are questions about can we fund it from somewhere else, like rural county grant funds? So I think.
Better place.
Right, exactly. Are there better places to fund things? So I guess just in, in your mind, if you see anything that you think really doesn't fit that definition?
I haven't reviewed it all yet, so.
Or attorney help would be appreciated. If you feel like there's some clot hole.
So there, so the, the programs, the governor's office, as they lay out a lot of them, a lot of the things that are being proposed here fall within that. There's nothing really that's going to stand out and say that it doesn't fit. And there's not a priority section within the statute. It's really vague. So it's not that one thing is better than the other. It's merely that it supplements them. But if you go to the governor's office of economic opportunity, they list out all their programs and it's a wide net that they cast. They cover so many different ones. It's really interesting. They have a film commission in there, immigration assistance, regulatory relief. There's a lot of different places that you could really expand, stretch, extend this definition to meet many things. Now, I think the traditional idea, some of these things might not be it, but a lot of these ancillary businesses or ancillary nonprofits do provide support to the economy and they diversify it as well. So it's harder to say, like, I think if in our minds, we're like, well, diversify the economy would be creating new jobs. That's not necessarily the definition we have here. So if you bring up the definition, uh, from the state statute, it's really, you could have things that could theoretically do the opposite of what people normally think of economic opportunity. And if it supports a program that the governor's office does, then that's sufficient. So using that statute definition, it can produce kind of a different result, but that's where the realm that we're working in.
Isn't it safe to say though, that all of the programs with the governor's office of economic opportunity are rooted in at minimum economic development?
I, I, I mean, like some of the programs, yeah, yes and no. It's not necessarily, um, it is weird because it's not development in the way that we normally think of development.
If it's not about growth, it's about supporting other economics.
Right. I mean.
Supporting the economy.
Sure. Well, it was so much wider than ours. I mean, when we were talking about doing a business expansion grant program, there was precedent for it because they have done business expansion grant programs, but they have done a lot more with, like you said, immigration assistance, broadband. Rotating loan funds, you know, um, like very low interest loan funds, a number of different things. There's precedent for a lot. And the law is extremely vague. So I, I, I would say that I, I would look to this to prioritize what you think it's what diversification is in the context within Grand County's discussions that have been ongoing for the past few years. And if there are serious concerns, I'm happy to go on their website and see, is there any sort of precedent for what we're talking about? Because they have a lot of programs that don't exist anymore that are still listed on the website.
Yeah. Uh, you know, for me, I think a lot of it should revolve around picking some projects that we know are kind of a sure thing, you know, and that we can.
What's the total amount that we have available?
Well, we really recently had to recalculate that. Do you have that from?
The numbers changed a few times in my head, so.
I think when August circulated, he listed 745,000.
No, it's gone down significantly. Because we didn't factor, we didn't factor in some liabilities, like the 100,000 that's going to the. No, the.
Oh, say no.
No. The study or the plan that we're doing, economic. Well, I have a strategic plan. So that wasn't, he didn't get that. So he added that in. Then I think he also calculated a projection out to the end of June for salary and benefits costs, which we hadn't done at that point either. And so, um, I'm thinking it's probably.
I thought made it 750 right here is what's in the packet. Estimated 750,000. Yes, that sounds high to me, but. The last packet had it closer to 500,000.
Yeah, that's what I think it should be.
I'm looking at the, I'm just looking at the current packet for today's evening. Last, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. On page 10 of the packet, you have the proposals listed 1 through 13, and at the bottom, there's estimated available funds and it says 750,000. I'm now looking to see if there's a, a different page. Also, folks online, I'm not doing any screen sharing right now, but if that would be helpful for you, please let me know and I'm happy to pull it up. Yeah, I think that 750 number. Unfortunately, I've been not. Sure.
Regardless, I think that the prioritization may not change. You know what I mean? Like if we pick the highest and best projects, then we can, you know, discern which ones, at the commission level, we can discern which ones we can afford and which ones we can't. And so to me, you know, I think that just prioritizing them without trying to like budget each individual project, you know, is moving things along.
Methodology, please. And then Karen.
Just one moment. I guess one thing I just wanted to put out there is that, you know, we, we did the survey. I know the survey didn't include all the projects, but I think that public support matters. And so, I don't, you know, does it all have to be explicitly on the sheet necessarily, but if we're taking into account, you know, I, I think we should somehow include whether there's public support from the survey in the way we consider these proposals. Agreed. And, and I would just say that when we did this and the way that I hope to facilitate it this time is that this is just for us all to understand where we're at as a table. It doesn't, it's not there to say, oh, this came out on top of the averages. We're going to vote on that. Um, go ahead, Karen.
Um, well, Chris, just to that point, I mean, only having 127 people respond to the survey out of 10,000 in the county is, is a pretty paltry response. So, I mean, I, I mean, yes, it's, you know, the people who did respond, I want to appreciate the fact that they did, but it is really small. Um, but I, Chris or Ben, was, have we had, um, an audit or any, um, financial reporting on the original monies that were given through this fund the last time?
I think we, yeah, in the packet, I think the spreadsheet has some status update and some of the.
Previous funding.
Some of the grantees have submitted their report on how the money's been spent.
So we're talking about the Star Business Grant.
I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Karen, just clarify. Okay, so you're asking about this.
That is correct.
Yes, we, we have started to receive, um, reports from some folks who have nearly or have finished their project. Yes.
Awesome. Okay.
And that's, um, for everyone's context, that's required as part of the funds and the grant contracting. So we'll definitely be collecting that information over the next two years. Sorry, keep going.
No, that's it.
Okay. Any other comments then about the, the criteria?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, I have a question. And I'm going to split some hairs because it really factors into how I would score and presumably I'm thinking how other people would score as well. So on the packet, where it talks about diversification feasibility and value, I totally get those. Where it speaks to impact, reach and need, is it fair to say that when we talk about that, we're speaking about that specific to economic development? So for example, and, and I'll, I'll give you some examples. Some of the really great proposals that we heard, I feel like have not just sufficient need, but great need, but would have no impact on economic development, period. Not even, let's, not even the further hurdle of diversification. They wouldn't necessarily impact economic development. So I spent a fair amount of time over the last week on the phone with folks at the EDA and trying to track down alternate funding for some of those proposals because some of them really got me.
Yeah.
The need of those and the value of those way more than sufficiently high, but zero economic development impact.
Yeah.
So how, when we talk about the need, the reach and the impact, are we speaking specifically to the impact as it relates to economic development activities or activities of the governor's office of economic development, not just the impact to our community?
I mean, I would say, at least on my opinion, is that we come at it from every time we talk about a project, we ask those questions and maybe there's other board members that have a reason to justify how it can impact or need on the economic development part of it. Because I can pretty much spin every single one of the, the make them fit economic development, but other than need, everyone's going to agree with me.
Yeah.
Got it.
Maybe we just make sure we talk about it.
Yeah, I, I think Stephen and Chris, well, we have a wide open door to walk through. And so the question is, what, who's in line? And, and I think the next thing to do is just to do a preliminary scoring. Let Ben complete the averages and then we can take each proposal one by one. We have some people here who have submitted proposals that can answer some questions we may have. Does that make sense for us at this point, Chris?
Sure.
Does that make sense for everybody? Then let's do that. And so Karen, on a line, we're going to go ahead and use the scoring sheet that was included in the packet. We're going to go ahead and ask everybody to go through and rate the projects on this sheet. Melissa made a really good point, which is that some of these are not necessarily immediate impact or immediate dollar impact or immediate job impact, but have some value as we look towards the future.
Can I just clarify? This is Elisa. Um, for those non-voting members, are we to also score these or not?
Non-voting members, I think it would be helpful to us to have your expertise.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I just put in the chat, if anyone online has already done this or is doing this and just wants to send me a picture of theirs, they can just text that number.
Forrest, what if, what if we, um, have just one idea and we want to stick to it?
That's your idea. Stick to it.
Okay.
It's, it would still be helpful if, if we had rankings on other things, I think.
Is there an easy way to raise, to weight a, a score?
But just give it a high score.
So like diversification's one through 10, right?
And then the rest are on one to five. But.
Yes. But yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, there's no breakaway, the way you just did a criteria sound. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, there's no breakaway to wait to use the criteria sound. If somebody from CK in here. I don't really have enough information, I think.
Do you want to look at the proposal?
Yeah, we got it there. Anyone at the table has done the sheet, you'd be happy to start tabulating it. Otherwise, no mush.
We get extra points for illustration.
I, I enjoy it.
Okay.
Not voting on. Say lobby.
This here is yours here. This is going to take me a few minutes, so hopefully I'll do that. Chill out. Really upset, man.
What kind of music?
Oh, I love the game.
So much pressure.
Put on some other kind.
We can have a development board dance party. I like that. Should we pass this around? Would you like me to start that round the room?
Yes. All of those pictures.
And there will be.
Yes, I don't know where I'm going to put you on this. But I value your input. It just won't be weighted. I've got someone online whose phone number ends in oh six four zero. Is that you, Karen?
No.
Okay.
Or do you want us to send our report to you?
If if you could send it to me, I'm I'm averaging out everything right now.
Okay, okay, okay.
Oh, six four zero is me, Ben.
Thanks, Megan. Karen, did you, uh, were you going to send me yours?
I did.
Okay, great. By email?
Uh, yes. Are you still Ben Alter at Dren County?
Yep, that should go to me. See it, yeah. Let's leave here. You're also welcome to, um, I put a phone number in the chat. If you want to text me a photo, you can do that.
Awesome. Okay, coming right now.
Great. I did just get it, though.
Okay.
But honestly, a a chat, a a text image would actually be a little bit easier.
Okay.
Yes, and I have to go back. That was so funny, Karen. They're probably perfect now. They're freezing the source.
Once really cold, now it is really warm. It was not a good balance in that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just the case that it's never the.
When we first came in, it was like glacial.
It just sort of passes in perfect temperature.
Like the Goldilocks and the three bears of air temperature.
Right?
Come on, Chris, get it.
Well. Yeah. Did you just turn it all again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I turned it way down.
That's not how you operate that, guys. Come on, it's one or two degrees and then you wave.
Have you seen that thing?
You just wave it back.
No, but have you looked at it?
You sound like my dad right now.
It says warm and cold. Yes.
Well, there's a.
Enjoy finding the nuance in warm and cold.
Hey, Ben, that um, that second uh proposal number is is an uh, an eight. Not a ten, not a ten. First line.
First line.
Here, do you want me to just resend it to you?
First, like top left corner box?
Yeah, so number two under.
Nope.
Oh, under diversification, that's an eight on a T.
Yes, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, I want to have a missing Elisa and I think we lost Dennis.
I'm not the message you ever can. It wasn't personal.
Elisa, are you doing your ranking? Are you, or are you just going to be part of the conversation?
I'm working on it. It's it's hard, but I'm getting through it. I'm, I can send it to you um soon.
Sure, sure. Just text me a photo when you're ready.
I will.
So just chat three of you here. Okay. So do um, do you want to start talking? If you want, like, just a few moments until Elisa's done, then we'll be ready.
I think we ought to start talking, start show our process of um deliberation and prioritization.
I have a clarifying question for Chris and Ben potentially, maybe. With regard to the specific request amounts and the proposals that were written, does the county commission have the ability, opportunity, purview, whatever, to take pieces and parts of those proposals and fund? to take pieces and parts of those proposals and fund some parts? Not other parts give more money than the money that was requested based on the recommendations that come on in from the Economic Development Office?
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be stringently to proposal or exact amount?
No, and some of these proposals are multifaceted and others may not be multifaceted, but some of them are.
There is some synergy among a couple of those. So Stephen was nodding his head.
Yeah, I I think the more so the more information that you guys can give the commission, the better. At the end of the day, if you guys just put in, we love this project. Um you're you're an advisory board, right? Your your goal is to provide you guys this expertise expertise in this field and provide as much information as possible. Now, if the information is only limited to which one you you like the most, that may not be utilizing the full ability that you guys have, but also understand that that at the end of the day, the commission could say, okay, great, we appreciate these thirteen things. We can pick door number fourteen. They can do whatever they want. But if you put more information as to why you're doing particular things, that's helpful to them. Also, you're welcome to come and do citizens to be heard, provide additional information. You can argue for your position or what you think is the most important, but at the end of the day, they've got the purview to do whatever it is that they want. And they could like certain things. They could say, hey, we're gonna have whatever fund for this other thing. So it's important to remember that as well. Because you guys get probably, I don't want to say it this way, but I think this is fair. You probably get to spend more time with these requests than what's a commission can, even though they have access to all the information. And some, you know, we we have one commissioner here. I know Mary was at the last meeting, right? So it's a varying shade of of how much commissioner gets to see these individual projects.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Great question. Do you want to start a conversation about mixing and matching?
Not necessarily. I just I know that it it sort of is feeding into how I did some scoring, and so I just didn't know how much latitude that the commission had to be able to say, you know, pieces, if I've been somewhere all.
Right. I think to Stephen's point though, we have the license to make some of those recommendations if we choose, even if that's what the board votes to support.
Sorry, this is all broken. I'm fixing it. Keep talking.
Is it because I keep changing my numbers Ben? Sorry. I just kind of add for his backspace button.
I think hazard hazard one more thing that I think thinks helpful. If if you go you go through this process, be specific on some of the things. If you really like a certain piece of it, be specific about it. If you really just like, uh you know, if you like your organization, I don't know if that provides as much strength to say that you could like, I'm just gonna use McDonald's. You could love McDonald's and say they're great, but if you don't say you like the Ronald McDonald Foundation, it might not carry as much weight. So I think that's really critical and important. And then when you guys are going through this, somebody probably should be taking really good notes because you might not have full support on all of the things. And that's what makes this process harder. You might get enough of you on to support door number fourteen, eighteen and thirty-four, but maybe you might fall short on the other ones. So keep good record keeping and see if you guys can make progress on them as you go. So just about.
Thank you.
Should we jump to comments Forrest or? I'll pull this up as soon as I'm ready, so sorry.
Well, let's let's do that. Let's take advantage of this time to invite comments. Even if we're not delivering, just comments. You want to start?
Sure. Uh I mean, I guess my comment is just that I really like, I think there are two different loan funds or ways to access loan funds in the proposals that we've gotten. And I feel like that's a really good use of money. I feel like it's a way to have an impact that reaches a lot of businesses across the region, across the county, um in a way that will continue to do so forever, you know, basically. Um and the the two that I'm sort of referring to are the revolving loan fund with the certification governments, but also the Wildcat Micro Fund. And I guess the Wildcat Micro Fund in particular, it just feels like there's money on the table that the county's not taking advantage of right now. There's a one point two million dollar fund that we can access. We just put in a little bit of support to have the staff to help administer it. Uh so that one feels like an exceptional value to me.
So we can't currently act as it because we don't have the staff?
That's right. And Megan can speak to it at much greater detail than I can because she, you know, it's it's the it's SBDC that would be the folks who help manage it. That's my understanding.
Yeah, so there's additional technical support that would go along with that. Um and I just don't have the bandwidth to be able to take on that additional support. Um and so covering that additional um staffing would essentially allow us to open that up and be able to support that and again, open that up. The the ultimate goal of that is to get businesses bank ready to access additional capital. Those that we have been able to send through are able to establish themselves and get enough of a P and L to actually go in and generally get business loans after the fact, because those that have uh done the one point two million dollars are actually banks. And so we've established them under um that and they're able to see that they're good stewards of money. They have established business. They have revenue sources. And so rather than having the two years of P and Ls, then we're able to usually do that under a shorter time, whether it be one year or six. Some of them we have actually been able to do six months because we can we have a strong standing um of revenues and um uh ongoing uh industry, proven industries, so.
So um to be clear Megan, the one point two million dollars is loan money that's available or?
It's like grant. It's like a grant.
Okay.
And they get up to nine thousand, three thousand dollars a a time. So they go and they say for three thousand dollars, I'll do with it. They spend it. They show record of that and they can go and pitch and get another three thousand um up to three times. Um we're working on getting that extended to five times in rural areas. So that would just be our two county radius. Um just because we're rural.
Okay.
And the specific request for that support staff is forty thousand, is that correct?
It would be forty thousand a year to hire a part-time person.
So Forrest, um along Chris's lines, my um one and only uh feel-good a hundred percent um backing is the um is the C log um fund, because I would really, really love, because this is the last time we're gonna get this money, to make this um a legacy uh a legacy loan money, like in perpetuity. So if we offer low interest loans, um you know, we could use the interest to pay for, you know, the origination fees and, you know, the the management to 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 deal with these loans. But I mean, I really think that, you know, to be fair, this would be um that's what I would support them the most.
My one comment on that is generally the revolving loan is not low interest. They're actually quite high. Um and so I would question that plus they take a percentage of it to um to to administrate it, which increases that interest rate. And so I would check on that before we support that and make sure that's where you want and it leaves that that legacy. Um because that's been the problem with those and with most businesses is it's a high enough interest rate that it causes problems with businesses and repayment during slow times.
Um yeah, and it was and it was interesting from our speaker last time. It sounded like we would have some uh liberty to to do with the funds that we wanted. I could have misunderstood that, but and then another note was to to look at local um banking institutions like Zions. Would they be able to to deal with funding for us or one of the credit unions?
Another good option could be Utah microloan as well because they are a nonprofit.
So that would be something I would hope that the board, the the county would look at, so.
Karen, I want to be sure I understood. When you were talking about the loan fund, you were talking about the revolving loan fund.
Yeah, because as it is, that was seemed to be our only option, but I would love for us to actually explore other options, you know, to to reduce those fees and address what Megan is talking about.
Yeah, I'm I'm not entirely sure what the ALG would require yet if we were to engage with them on this. Typically revolving loan funds are like gap financing. So you go to a normal bank, you can't get a loan for whatever reason. And then you go to this revolving loan fund and then they supply you with, you know, whatever you need. That's the gap between conventional lending at this. Um but they have discussed, you know, I've talked with August and and several people from the ALG about it and they they kind of did kind of make it sound like it was uh negotiable, you know, the all the different elements of who we would target, how it'd be administered, those kinds of things. So I don't know. Interest interest rates would be locked in um with the ALG, or we could say we just want interest rates that are enough to cover the administrative fees so that the fund doesn't evaporate over time. But I guess we need to reach out to ALG and get more details. Um but revolving loan funds are sort of one of the elemental backbones of economic development. And so not having one of those is a pretty significant detriment to us, I would say. Especially for.
Clarifying question Megan for you, just because I want to make sure because it does factor in for me. Forty thousand dollars for a part-time body to help administrate access to the Wildcat Fund opens up one point two million dollars potentially of grants to the people who go through the small business program with USU.
Yes.
Because I feel like for me, it's sort of a combination of both. So I agree with everything that Karen said, but I like the idea of being able to invest forty thousand dollars to have a body to do that administrative work and then open up access to one point two million dollars of grants that are not just given their sort of massage through the process, meaning gate number one business plan and you have to buy in that this will be a successful business. Gate number two, if you've been running that business and we're now starting to see signs of success for you to be able to apply for gate number two, and I kind of like that we have access to that one point two just investing the forty. And then I'm with you. It's it's, you know, the revolving loan funds are the backbone for people who wouldn't traditionally qualify for a business loan, which is gonna be a lot of people in our community. And I liked the idea that they did say that we could put some restrictions in place to keep them, you know, just for our county, just for our whatever. I really liked that too. I think the USU Small Business Development Center is also a pretty low-hanging fruit for me, just in terms of looking at economic development.
Let me say the revolving loan fund roughly has three million for our county?
No, we would put in to supplement, I think. And then we could earmark whatever we supplemented from our county. He sort of suggested that they could put that in revolving loan fund for just our.
The region has three million currently, well, like in general. Um and they actually have a large portion of that already going to Grand County. There it's one of the highest application rates for the region um that applies for the revolving loan fund is actually Grand County.
So where does that money come from Megan?
Uh so so it applies for several grants. I believe they have four grants currently feeding into that, mostly federal grants. Um the downside of feeding off of federal grants is it does take about six weeks for businesses to get their funding. Um and so that is one of the downsides to getting funding through the revolving loan. Uh so uh but you know, it's a it's a funding option that they have available to them.
But it didn't sound like to me that if we put money in that loan fund, it didn't sound like it was just for Grand County. It would be earmarked for the whole region is kind of what it sounded like to me.
I think they would earmark, they can earmark it for just Grand County. Like I know San Juan County has one just for San Juan County. And so I think that Grand County could easily do that same thing. Um it's just a matter of determining exactly the way it should work. What type, like is there a specific type of industries we want to focus on because they're not bankable? Because there's a lot of industries in Grand County and one of the reasons why the revolving loan fund is so popular is banks will not uh loan to tourism. They will not loan to hospitality right now. Um and so that's one of the reasons why it gets used a lot. They also use the Utah microloan fund a lot to the point where actually Utah microloan just opened up to up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars um because of those restrictions. And so uh I think that's one reason why we use that so much out of Grand County.
Ben checked on on the uh businesses from Grand County who were receiving loans. Um apparently, if I'm reading this correctly, forty loans um currently, five from Grand County. And in the last twelve months, three or four of them have actually paid off their loan.
Wow, that's about right, yeah.
Yeah, so just kind of text about the interest rates, which I can use just to learn.
In the meantime, just to add some color and fill out uh what Stephen was saying a little bit on, you know, going a little bit deeper into the why behind the things. One that I would also look at that's high on my list is the proposal from Redtail Air. Have a lot of concerns from an economic development standpoint about cutting off their service to our own state. So when it comes to things like investors, Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, people that we would want at a state level to be able to support what we're doing, it concerns me that we're that far away or that long of a time commitment from our own state. And it's not necessarily the distance so much as it is again, our old state. So that one has a lot of my attention. Um the other one from an economic diversification, although uh as it regards the year, not necessarily the industry, would be the arts administration position. Because when we talked at the last meeting, they had talked about being able to use that body to maybe look at winter festivals or off-season arts activities that would be outside what normal hospitality would be bringing to the area. And it felt more like proactive business development opportunities to try some new tries. So that one kind of had my attention. And then again, in terms of splitting and what the county commission is able to do, I'm very interested in any ability to look at the south building portion of the proposal for the Community Resource Center, which was where they were talking about housing office space maybe. Because we had talked about a podcasting room being in need at one of our last meetings to be able to support some new and upcoming businesses for marketing, advertising, reach those types of things. Also coworking space. I know Ben had identified it as a high-value investment for the state. It's also a high-value investment for the EDA. And in my conversation with them, they said on something like a coworking space, we would be willing to match construction for the right type of product up to projects for up to three million dollars. And then whatever they do with the rest of those spaces is sort of up for grabs how they serve the community. But I do feel like we keep talking about that coworking space, maybe a podcasting space, whatever. So maybe reducing that amount to the portion that would be uh matching to get that piece of construction done for specifically coworking spaces, economic development, podcasting space, maybe.
So you're talking like a new building on the campus, on the own campus or an existing one?
In the proposal, they they broke out and I don't remember specifically, but in their proposal, I feel like they had four chunks where they had broken out the dollar amounts requested. One of the buildings specifically, I think maybe it was labeled the south building. They had talked about the need for bathrooms, hazmat shower and something else. And in those spaces specifically, they had mentioned maybe coworking space. The reason why I asked the question that I asked in the last meeting about whether or not they're coordinating with the USU Small Business Center is for me. And again, I'm just adding color on maybe like how you split it apart or what you could do if they were working directly with the small business uh program through USU. And then as part of that, they were given an option to be able to have a coworking space that has training. Well, so maybe, you know, the first three months is no cost. Next two months is low cost. And then they move to like a market rate, whatever. It seems like that would be long-term sustainability, but it would kind of be a way to get loving arms around our entrepreneurs. It seems like that would be long-term sustainability, but it would kind of be a way to get loving arms around our entrepreneurs, which is our long tail. So with our economic development, we've got, you know, state, local, federal government, and then we have one or two larger businesses. But really in our community, most of the economic development comes from that long tail of small business owners. So to be able to supply them with, hey, go to the USU Small Business Center, they'll give you access to the Wildcat Micro Fund. And help you do your pitching. You'll have access to a revolving loan fund. We'll make sure that you have. Coworking space that's available. You know, we even at low or reduced cost to start with. It feels like that's a really great way to nurture and to cultivate that long tail that we have of small business development. And then I would just put in that last plug of maybe then we don't also cut ourselves off from the rest of our state.
Melissa, are you are you um suggesting that twenty-two thousand one hundred seventy-six and the twelve thousand two hundred forty? And the specific amount of office space? Allocating that and also the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bathroom?
No, no, what I'm saying is um. If if the county commission can really look closely and break apart those proposals. One way that I would feel comfortable for. You know, economic development or being able to get support behind that is if we broke that proposal down specific to what was needed to create. Coworking space. Because then there are additional grants and I would be happy to work with them on chasing those down. To be able to create, I like the idea of a backbone kind of. Support network or structure for our small business entrepreneurs. So if they can get that building and have a building that's dedicated to coworking space, maybe it does have a podcasting room. And they can lease out to entrepreneurs in the community. And then they work in partnership with USU because to me that would be part of it also that would be really important. Is you're getting the counseling, we're helping you build your business plan, we're making sure that we're doing everything to get you. Positioned for success, including access to capital, which is huge. But then also let's get you out of your house and into a space where you can really focus on that business. I kind of like the potential that that presents for our community for entrepreneurs and small business owners.
So Kate, are you still on? Can you speak to that possibility?
Um I'm here, so. Um yes, that's what we were thinking about in terms of that south building space to be kind of um. A maker space slash coworking space. We have heard through the process of bringing in different organizations, the Community Resource Center. We've gotten a lot of applications um from entrepreneurs in particular who just do not have the space. Um to make their ideas come come alive, I guess. Um and one of those things was um podcasting space, actually. Um in particular, so um that's spot on with the need that we found and it would be in the um. Back south building. Um so there's three buildings currently on the campus. And there's unfinished space, which we would need. Um for that building to be usable, we need to re-roof it. We need to put two more bathrooms to increase the capacity to. Hold more people in the space and then we need to finish out the front space, which is currently warehouse.
They think on that total commitment, so say for example, the three hundred and eleven. If if you made the recommendation to the commission to half that. The EDA and certainly the state, I think that that falls right in line with their investment priorities. To be able to support and match construction on those, but I just I love the idea of a seamless approach to our entrepreneurs.
So Kate, if we if we did uh commit to the improvements on the south building. Uh would you guys be able to commit then to also to the the ideas that we've talked about with coworking space? Podcast space, et cetera?
Yes, we would be able to commit to that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I just put in the chat what I think that she's talking about. It's an EDA funded project for a coworking incubator. An accelerator for business out in Denver that I toured in April under the EDA. Um so that you guys can kind of see that, but. Uh it backs exactly what she just talked about, about backing the business owners. It creates that that tour space. Um and then what you're gonna see coming up in like business development grant, coworking space grants, that they want. The incubators for businesses to get them going and off the ground, but also once they're on the ground and they're in a growth phase. They want to see the accelerator programs to help move them in those next phases. And then the micro certificates, which we've established. And so that's just kind of that backing with that small business development center piece that I think that she was trying to bring in as well. Um and having those those pieces together. This is specifically for tech in downtown Denver, but kind of that same. Uh idea, but in what specifically to MOA.
And I I think Megan, between you and between the new resource at USU. In collaboration with the Community Resource Center. I think we could really establish a strong support and the weaver of the Wildcat Fund. I I feel like that's sort of everything that you need to support those entrepreneurs. And then again, like I said, I like the idea of then supporting that arts body to diversify out the year and the whys. Of people coming and again, don't cut us off from our state. That's all I hope to say. Thank you.
So uh Melissa, if I can, I mean, we for many, many years, we did not have service to Salt Lake and I'd like to mention that. State uh representatives, um our governor and I all UDOT represent, they have their own. Airplane and so, I mean, I don't want to. Uh I I I I agree that it's a it's a great service, but it feels to me like a private enterprise and. Um you know, they did get funding already in the past. I I, you know, for us to. Fund that for twice a week for eight passengers and in the spring and summer, you know, it potentially could be. You know, four to six passengers because of weight and balances. I just, I I it seems like. I mean, I would I would feel a little uncomfortable with that because it feels like a private enterprise. But I I I get what you're saying um. And I, you know, I respect your input on that it as well. And I would just like to say that, like, looking at a a a pod. Casting space, I mean, it would really, who, it would be great to have better connection with KZMU because they also have. The capability to to use that. Like if we could, I mean, I feel like there's, again, we have all these silos, like, how are we going to be able to connect? These different organizations together. So just food for thought there.
Chris?
Yeah. One thing that I'm thinking about as we go through these is, you know, census is the last chance to spend these types of dollars before. You know, the law changes, you know, are some of these things possible to fund after that? And I believe there's some possibility and some people, Chris might be able to speak to this. That the red tail lights could be considered under tourism promotion. And that the arts position could be considered under tourism promotion. So. I'd like to hear back as to whether that, I mean, if that's not totally not the case, then this might be the last chance, but if that is a way. Considered, there might be future chances for funding with these tax dollars.
Yeah, so I do think that we can spend uh. TRT money on airports. But it's a different category of TRT than what we're talking about right here. I think we'd have to probably cut into the side of the TRT that we use to fund search rescue and law enforcement. I'd have to double check that, but I'm pretty sure that that would be the case if we wanted to use TRT for that. And so, you know. Just so we're all clear, I mean, we haven't had subsidized service to Salt Lake for several years. And so the change that occurred recently is switching the hub from Denver to Phoenix. Uh and we didn't have subsidized service to Salt Lake. The last time we've had that was when boutique had to get. The central air service contract with federal DOT. So I it is a, you know, a nice thing to have for sure, but we haven't had it for several years.
Chris? Correction on that, Delta does fly five times a week up in Salt Lake City.
Oh, do they? Is it subsidized? Oh, through Skywars, okay.
Yeah, it's been on, uh they they have the three contract, they've been going on going for three years.
Okay, correct.
Okay, let's turn our attention, I've asked Ben to take the results of the. Scoring and organize them in descending order. Um on the average and you can see them ahead of you. And I think we ought to just walk through these in order, descending order. And open conversation up for anyone who wants to start talking about the proposal number two, which is a small business.
Senior business consultant salary.
Yeah, so this is essentially an additional hundred thousand dollars. On top of the three hundred thousand dollars that we've already committed to the SBDC. And it would essentially guarantee a fourth year, is my understanding.
Um two hundred thousand, that would guarantee all five years, I believe, because the original request was five hundred thousand for five years, we gave them three hundred thousand. So I think that would be, okay, that would be the remaining five years. Or sorry, the remaining two years for a total of five years.
Comments?
I know that Megan originally said that the hope is that 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 person in that position will be able to write their own grants. To help supply that, do we feel like three years is enough time for them to start writing those grants to be able to fund it?
Then to possibly come back, you know, I mean, the the county can reconsider.
Right.
So source of funding to three years down the road if that's needed at that point. I I think I sort of agree with you. You know, the hope would be that they can get themselves to a point of sustainability. That's.
Well, I think, I mean, Megan may maybe could speak to that, but it sounds like their funding opportunities are not actually sustainable, but. I mean, is there the possibility of becoming uh sustaining the SBDC without any local contribution, Megan?
Are is there opportunity for that? That's the ultimate goal, but it would be built off of soft funds. Um that position would always be built up of soft funds unless that they became an instructor of the university. Um and that was talked about at one point in the process of building um that position. Um and so the what we would do, building that position out from now on, as we would start. You know, writing the grants and things like that, and we would take whatever funding that we received. Um and it would be what what we would consider last last use funding. And so like, for example, if we got a grant starting fiscal year in July one. Um and they they would use, say, fifty thousand dollars for that as part of their salary, then we would use that first. And then that a fifty thousand dollars would go on the backend um of whatever funding that we've got. So say if we have. Have the full five hundred thousand, we can extend that five hundred thousand out to say ten years. If we have that, but if we don't have enough funding to keep that position in place to establish themselves. Between the class revenues and grant funding and things like that, and we run out of funding before that's in place. Then we're not able to sustain it um ongoing. Um I was able to sustain my position permanently. Um within three years, but I also had COVID grants and things like that that came much easier than what would be available right now. Because we don't have that additional funding, so we do need the extra time to be able to do that. And so having that extra two years would allow us that extra time to get that backup standing. Um to be able to push that out and have that as an ongoing thing. I hope that makes sense.
Uh I'm the one who's confused, Megan. Um so the county is is investing three hundred thousand dollars. Out of that, out of the TRT now. So that's, so that's for three years.
Yes.
And what what this would do if we funded it at a hundred thousand would be another year. And at two hundred thousand dollars, it would be a fifth year. Is that correct?
I'm it, I'm sorry, I'm just playing devil's advocate because I think this is such a great program and I think it's so necessary. I just also worry about the if after three years it can't be somewhat self-sustaining. That we're gonna lose it after five then would be like my fear and so. And maybe that's okay, because maybe then we'll just have it for five years and if it hasn't been self-sustaining at that point, we've still got it for five years. But it just, I mean, that would be the hope. And I and I talked a lot with with her predecessor Beth about it and and I know Megan's done such a good. Good job of like keeping her position sustainable, uh just. I mean, I think it's a little bit of skin in the game that that would be our requirement of of that position is they have to do some grant writing. And have to go search for some some money to.
It is part of their position. It's actually written right into their position that it is there is grant writing, it's part of their position. And to extend that out. We made sure that that was well known as part of the interview process um and then part of the onboarding as well.
Megan, a quick question. If if the board decided to invest an extra hundred thousand dollars. But then also funded the part-time position for Wildcat for two years. Does that create some synergy that could help sustain both of those positions?
It wouldn't.
Okay.
Um it would just, it would just build. My concern about about funding both the programs like that. Is that we would build, like, for example, we only had two years on that Wildcat Fund. Um and we run out of funding. I think that it would create a an issue with building that sustainability. I would rather just backfill. The current position for the two years. Um and then build programs around that to get the Wildcat funding in place. Um on a on a four-year grant, um which we have several uh grants out. There's again. Anytime you're working with the grant, there's no guarantee of funding. Um but we do have three out right now. Um that we're working um on getting those that funding in place, so. Um but funding one for one year and then a two-year on a part-time, I think that that we will create. More of a problem than we will. Um and I'm not sure how to explain that properly, but I think that if you get the the micro fund started and then we run out of funding for that micro. Fund person because there's only a two-year position and we don't, then we got to dump all that in. That work on top of somebody that's going to already be busy, we're going to run into the same problem I have right the second. That makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. So is there a recommendation from the group? For funding level for the SBDC?
But I I can I ask one more clarifying question to Megan? So in the past, we've only had a part-time person filling that uh that position for years and years and years. Now, then we had you, Megan. Now we've committed to having a full-time person for three years and. It and in your opinion, it is still not enough. Is that correct?
I think a full-time person is enough. But that full-time person is both doing uh small business development and workforce development, so they're running a dual role there.
And can that be shared with workforce services or with, I mean, is there like other entities that we're. We're actually not capturing right now that we should have closer.
We work very closely with workforce services. We're not there to replace them. We're there to add additional services. Um as part of that, so we do workforce skills training and things like that in the the back there programming up. But they're also stretched pretty thin as it is.
Megan, how long's your waitlist again?
For businesses or for? So I am currently booked out by about four weeks. It takes about four weeks to get into me. And then um as far as like to get into the micro fund, I have about fifty businesses that if I just opened it up right now, that could apply. But I have to have the technical services to back it up. Now Kima can probably fill some of that while she's starting out. Um but once we just open it up, open it up and say, hey, this is a great program. And we market it and tell everybody what it is, that fifty businesses is going to turn into a lot more businesses very, very quickly. Also take into consideration that I've done zero outreach. The businesses I have that I work with actively have come to me. I've done no like. Walk down and introduce myself outside of like the flooding and I I specifically did that because we had additional loan options and I wanted to make sure that. Businesses could um needed, didn't need anything specifically to get up and running again.
But Kima has, she's she has started, correct?
She starts on the first, so in two days.
And then we are going to have her full-time in Grand County?
Yep.
And that's really the first time ever we've had a full-time position in that.
And that's really the first time ever we've had a full-time position in that. Yeah, okay. Okay. And, sorry, Megan, but do you feel that, so will she be able to? It seems like you would be able to do your other work, and now we have a full-time person in Grand County, and she's gonna be able to do outreach and do the work that's needed. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, once again.
Sorry.
Is somebody, somebody willing to make a recommendation? Then I will recommend a hundred thousand dollar for an extra year for this project right now. Chris, could you give us an update on that target dollar amount we're working with?
Uh, I was trying to find August's spreadsheet, I couldn't find it. Um. I'm probably planning around, I six hundred thousand total.
Okay.
Um. And then if there's more or less than that, you know, the commission can make adjustments. But uh, yeah, I just couldn't find the spreadsheet, and the seven fifty just doesn't sound right.
Okay.
Because it was, you know, seven fifty to eight fifty before we started refining things. And so we've had to take two hundred thousand off, I know, since then, for sure. Um, and then factoring in also projecting out salary and benefits until the end of June, you know, and so it's gotta be less than seven fifty, I would think, but. So I don't, I can't find the, the link to the spreadsheet on my, on my phone. I go, I'll go, you know, after this meeting's over, I'll go try and see if I can find it, and then send out a, an email just so everybody on this board is aware, sort of, or it's a moving target, you know? And it's based on projections anyway, and so I was running this based on some very conservative revenue projections, and I have to go back in, we just barely got our uh, March TRT in, and I haven't crunched the numbers on that yet. And so I need to go and check to see what my March projections are looking like relative to the actuals that came in. And then I might be able to adjust the total amount that we're working with as well. But again, it's just a moving target, it's gonna be that way all the way through this whole process.
I agree with the recommendation for a hundred thousand.
So I'm gonna suggest that we work our way down, move forward. I've made a recommendation of a hundred thousand, I don't think we need to have a motion for each account for each recommendation.
I don't, was that discussed before? I think usually that's the strongest thing to do.
It's, it's easier to do it that way, it's cleaner. But it's however you guys wanna do it, at the end of the day, if you went hundred, hundred, but then you'd have to work backwards.
We had to put the dollar amounts down.
Well, you could do, you could work consensus up to the point where you get done, and then somebody makes a motion based on that.
Yeah, I have to do numbers. Okay, so.
And then number three, the next.
And, uh, one information on that, Ben got some information from the loan fund. The, um, interest rate is typically one to two points above the line, and that's just simply to reflect the higher risk factor involved in the loan. So there was some concern about the, the, the interest rates being higher.
Well, they are.
Which they are, which they are, so.
Do you share anything about origination fees, or I mean, and, and I don't mean detail, I just mean, do you know if they are generally in alignment with best practice for financial lending, or are they like?
Ooh.
No, I, um, I had just a very quick text with Jade before this, because I learned that it was gonna be a question. So, um, they're at the Association of Local Government, I'm sure they're happy to like go into their whole program, they have nothing to hide. Um, but yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer right now.
Um, Melissa, on page thirty, it shows that it's a one point five loan origination fee.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so I'm sorry, for proposal two, this is, this is called consultant salary, we said.
One hundred, that's.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Proposal three is small business rotating loan fund. Uh, any recommendations from the group?
I was feeling like between two or two fifty for that, and I think it's super important. But when I'm calculating all the other things that we've kind of said we, we wanna be part of too, like.
I think.
Well, if the six hundred, if we're working with Chris's conservative six hundred thousand, those combined is half of that.
So I would, yeah, I would say two fifty.
Or. I'm sorry.
No, I, I totally am in alignment with the idea of the revolving loan fund, the only thing that I would say until we were finished is mine would be more in alignment with the philosophy, meaning I think it's important, and if we don't identify specific projects that we feel like we need to allocate to first, that for me would be the spillover bucket, because the forty thousand dollars for the Wildcat fund, I would put above that just because those are grants that we have access to that we didn't invest in. And so like I would save that as like the spillover bucket, the way that, you know, Chris had said earlier, that's sort of like bread and butter for our economic development strategy, but that's just.
That's why I was going on the, I'm hoping that it's higher, but something.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm not really sure if there's like a critical mass on, on those funds, I think in this case we'd be talking about a revolving loan fund that's separate from the big general one that they administer, and so like I said, I don't know exactly what the, the options are for that, and, and you know what I mean, like, because we've been speaking to, um, sort of the, the rules and parameters of the bigger one. But if we were to work with the ALG on this smaller one, this specific to Grand County, then we might be able to, you know, come up with some different parameters. Um, I'm not really sure, and I don't know what the, like I say, what's the critical mass for having an effective revolving loan fund? I don't know that answer either, you know, two fifty sounds, you know. Okay, Megan, do you know how big the, um, revolving loan fund is that San Juan County has specifically?
I don't, I know that, uh, it wasn't huge, and it specifically, there's a, there's specifically one for Monticello and specifically one for San Juan County, and they're not huge. Um, and so I, I would have to do some investigation on that.
But does two, two hundred and fifty thousand sound, you know, just like kind of in a ballpark, or?
Yeah, yeah, the other thing to think about is what are the sizes of loans that the businesses or the industries in Grand County are going to need? Is that going to be enough to do, like, how many loans are you thinking are gonna come out of that fund? Are there, is it gonna be the four or five that they've been doing? Or, and then what are the sizes? That's the other, the other question, is it gonna be a twenty-five hundred, or sorry, twenty-five thousand dollar loans, or are they gonna go up to, to a hundred thousand? Does that make sense? Because that'll look back to how impactful that money's gonna be.
And then Megan, with the Utah micro loans, do you, um, uh, do, could we specify that if that just goes to Grand County? Like, if that's a better use of, of, of putting money into?
I just sent an email off to hit, off to their CEO to see if it's a possibility. I would think you could, because you're the ones that are putting the money into. The other thought process on that too, and a lot of people don't know that, is then we can look at RMAP, and then nobody in the state of Utah has ever gone after RMAP. Um, and RMAP would double a few of our efforts here. There is a technical assistant part of RMAP that we could look at, both for the Small Business Development Center or the coworking space, um, but then it would put additional funds into that, um, loan amount, and specifically to help businesses, um, that would not normally be bankable to be able to get loans, and so it would kind of do a double thing, so. Um, it just depends on where we put it, because we, they could not apply under if we went with, um, SUE, so. Uh, I just emailed Doug and waiting to get a reply back on whether we could go with, uh, Utah micro loans.
Awesome, true. Forrest, can I just make a, a, um, a suggestion that whoever i- is following this? I mean, is it the commission, or is it Chris, um, that we look at what our options are with the micro loan?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we could maybe specify that it's like either revolving loan fund or a micro fund, either or. Is that what you're talking about, or?
Yeah, I mean, just where we're getting the most bang for our buck, and not, you know, and having it as a legacy fund for these one-time funds that we have right here.
I love that, and Megan, what you were talking about, that is really attractive.
The other thing is the Utah micro fund is an SBA lender, so they're already, those businesses are already getting in with an SBA type of a loan, and so it makes it a smoother process if they go after a larger loan in the future.
Okay, so if I'm understanding that we're allocating, the proposal is allocate two hundred thousand dollars to a loan fund, but we're not designating which one at this point?
Sounds like.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, agreement, what do you think about that, Karen?
I, I would like to fund it at six hundred thousand.
I'd change the number, so it'll pass two to two fifty.
I hope it.
So. And there may be spillover, so it might be more.
Yeah, what Megan was saying, I would say two fifty.
All right, and number five is next?
Number five is the Career and Technical Education Student Career and Success Center.
I'll speak to that just real quickly. I mean, the thing that stands out to me when we looked at the average scores on it is it was the highest SEACLE score on need. Everybody around the table who put in this work card agreed that it's a very high need. Now, I mean, I, I think there's, you know, there's a lot more that we're looking at than just need, but clearly, I mean, it just, it was so compelling to seeing the graduation rates in the area falling, and being able to offer a program that can help deal with that trend and help bring people into the workforce in the area is something I think we should consider. One thing that I would say with it is, my understanding is, it's a program that's gonna happen. Um, and so we don't necessarily have to fund at any specific level to be helping make it happen and be the best thing that it can be, uh, but I, I, I feel like that's quite a worthy thing, and I do think, I mean, it is economic development, it is workforce development, there's no doubt about that.
I, I am really struggling with that one, and again, giving color so that you've got all the information when you go and present to the county commission. That one is so high on my list that I actually scheduled lunch with them this week so that we can talk about what are some other avenues, because to me, it is absolutely unacceptable that our graduation rates are going in the direction that they're going, and this is where I would look to Chris and to Ben and to Stephen about what those guidelines are, because Shaly had a great point too, you guys are right, as far as developing our workforce and keeping them here and keeping them employable, absolutely. Is it standard economic development and diversification? No. But if you look at economic development in terms of the most successful authentic economic development, which is what I'm a proponent of, it's how do we create a community where people want to come and live and work? Because that's the most authentic piece of economic development is, you know, people don't wanna come here and work or have a business if they think that their children are gonna have a lower percentage chance of graduating from high school. So I was one of the people who put the need way up there, but also it's one of those stretches for me about tying it directly to economic diversification, so that's why I'm providing color, so that you can make a recommendation based on, you know, I feel the same way about Seek Haven, if we don't have women who are able to contribute economically because there are barriers to entry into the workforce, that's another argument that I would make for authentic economic development, is what kind of community do we wanna build that we want people to want to come and work in? So that's kind of where I sit, so I don't know how my opinion comes down, because I don't know how much latitude we choose to have as a community, but I agree with you, Chris.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna reveal a disclaimer that's important. Um, my wife is the mental health therapist at the high school. And I think the conversation that we had with Kari is that in her presentation, talking about the number of kids who are not completing school because they don't, they're not typical learners, and there has been nothing specialized for them, and, and with some skills, they can actually be employed locally, because many of them are, have been raised here. So I think there is value in looking at that as a workforce, as well as a skill-building opportunity. Comments?
Were you actively seeking input from the three of us on this?
I think, input in terms of making a recommendation, I wouldn't be sure how to make the recommendation, because there were two or three different proposals that I looked at from that standpoint that I am highly in support of, depending on the amount of latitude that we get, and I feel like our kids are, women are, you know.
It's my last day, and say shit in heaven.
Blow it, blow it, man.
No, I mean, I, I consider education, uh, economic development for sure. Um, like my first big economic development project was actually convincing the county to make the initial contribution to the new USU campus, you know, and that got the ball rolling on that, and I think that education, you know, having a skilled workforce and human capital is essential. And a lot of the time when you're talking about, uh, business expansion, recruitment, retention, you know, that's one of the big things that they're gonna ask, like, do you, do you have employees for us that know how to do the things that we need them to do? Um, and so, you know, I think that if we're looking for diversified interests, then technical, uh, career training is essential.
I'd follow you down that path.
So Melissa, I think that the question is, do we wanna consider that part of what we consider community building in terms of economic development, workforce development, skills building? The commission can say we don't think that's part of it, but we could.
So Lisa, what did you find? Where can we find them, uh, money and support? Because, yeah, value need and impact for me on this item was all fives. Um, and, you know, I, I am a, a huge supporter, I, you know, called everybody on the board that I knew to come and present, um, because I think it is so important, but I just, you know, when you look at the feasibility, this is one-time money, and I don't wanna just, I wanna be cognizant of that, like, this is not sustainable for, you know, most of the, you know, the, the entities that we're, we're looking at, um, being able to use that and, and, you know, guarantee that they have funding for them, but I would like to find, um, you know, be it funding or somehow support, because I really do think there's a disconnect between, uh, our community and our school, and our school community, so.
I would love to share positive information with you. What I will say is, in a few hours' time, I was able to track down information and funding, which is why, you know, hey, let's switch this to coworking space, hey, let's switch, and what I found on the school side so far is we really don't have a lot of investment or a lot of priority for our kids.
I mean, one thing I would say.
So as far as finding that one, it's, no, I was just gonna say, there's nothing that's really straightforward or cut and dry that I've been able to identify, which is why I wanted to talk to her and get more details so that I could go the next level down, but I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, I know, it would be really nice to have this conversation with the superintendent as well, kind of disappointed she didn't show up, but.
Who you spoke with?
Pardon me?
Is that who you spoke with, did you speak with?
No, I spoke with, is it Kari?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I emailed, and she and I are gonna get together and have more common faith in it. But I, it's gonna take a deeper dive if this board or the county commission doesn't feel like that's worthwhile, it's gonna be harder to find than the business stuff, which I find really an ironic commentary on priority.
I mean, one thing I would say with that one is that it does seem to me like there's a feasibility in the sense that by getting it off the ground, we get students in, and then student dollars, state education dollars help sustain it. So that's, that's the kind of thing that I think is worth a grant, you know what I mean, like? I would put a hundred thousand towards it. I mean, that still means that there's a lot of other money that needs to be raised to, you know, and, and found to make it happen, but I feel like there's a commitment from the school district to do that.
But I feel like whatever this body would recommend, and whatever the county commission votes on, those are mounting dollars. So it's easier to find another hundred thousand to go with it than it is to find the entire amount.
Sure.
So, hundred thousand?
All right, does it help get this moving?
Certainly helps, good.
Does it?
Yes.
Okay, so, sounds like we're wants to.
Consensus about a hundred thousand?
Might have to make tweets.
I've got fifty thousand left. I've got fifty thousand. I don't know, if we wanted to like do some.
You said six hundred thousand.
Oh yeah, yeah, I did, so it got one hundred, two hundred, two fifty, so that's four feet, oh sorry, a hundred fifty thousand.
My other two is I think, I think charter service.
That's the well, that's a loan fund.
For the small business retainment, so I appear at the bottom because we weren't sure, I just did two hundred fifty thousand to unspecified loan fund. And then when the agenda item is created, the conversation will capture the different proposals we were looking at. So, uh, so yeah, I guess the next thing on the list would be the Community Resource Center.
They should be the next rural county grant.
Yeah, you mean the, um, the.
Yeah.
It's the easiest one to find.
Single entity, it's hard infrastructure, it's a fantastic program.
When did you say the next?
It won't, it won't be for a little while.
It'll be this winter, so you'll apply in November and find out in January. And we're sure that has to, you know, wrap up there. Keep the fire under their butt, but yes.
Kate, are you still with us?
Please do.
Yes, I'm still with you.
Okay, and you've heard that we're proposing a commitment to the Student Success Center. Um, but on your budget, it showed that there would be some improvements needed to be made in the west building, is that correct?
Yes, one of them is re-roofing, re-roofing for the roof of the west building. The roof is deteriorating, and there's gonna be sixteen partner organizations in that building. A new roof costs about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It will also allow us to leverage solar funding. In approximately a half million dollars that we won't be able to put on the roof unless we can get that re-roofed.
And I'm sorry, I, I said the south building, but I meant the west building, which is where the schools would go in.
Yeah.
What, can we just, so we talked, Kate, we talked about, and I think the interest was in the possibility of coworking space. So what aspect of your proposal relates to that?
Uh, in terms of the south building?
Yeah.
So the south building relates to the coworking space.
Does that mean?
And what, what, can you break down what you're asking for the south building?
Um, yes, I can. So I'm asking for finishing up the warehouse space in front in order to put. Um, the coworking space there and adding two additional bathrooms to increase the capacity of the building. As well as re-roofing of that building as well.
And what's the total on that?
Kate, can you get a, a cheaper quote than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two bathrooms?
Unfortunately not, we, we made a lot of decisions in our own renovation process to not redo bathrooms. Because even a renovation of a bathroom is about fifty thousand dollars. So it's quite pricey, but it will increase the capacity of the building to, right now, there's only one organization in the building. We could increase the capacity to at least four or five. So that's independent bathrooms for each, rather than like a group bathroom that multiple entities can use together? So, there's two bathrooms in that building currently. But the capacity is only enough for a certain number of people to be in that occupied of space. So we need those two additional ones, and those would also be the unisex bathrooms.
So question, point of clarification, Kate, on the west building renovation. Can the Grand County School Project not go into that west building without those? Capital improvements? Or can they still move in without it?
They can move into it without it, but the re-roofing of that building would go a long way in keeping our operating costs down. Thus keeping the cost share rates for all the organizations down. Right now, they're quite below market value, and we wanna keep it there. We don't wanna move up any further towards market value. And getting this re-roofed and getting solar on this building would allow us to maintain those rates.
But only with regard to the high school, that's it? What needs to be done?
We're talking about the west building?
The west building.
Right.
Because I guess maybe I wanna go back to the hundred thousand on the Grand County School District and ask if we do. Feel like it's in line with the economic development initiatives. Do we wanna just fund it to make sure that it happens and is successful? But then would it be a barrier to entry if there's gonna be something in the improvements of that building that are gonna keep them from moving in? So that's the question I'm asking, like, do you have to have the new roof in order for the school to move in?
Well, yes, to the first, and then to the second, there's already businesses in there, right Kate? Like, we're just another business that, another entity that's moving into that facility.
So theoretically, and I'm not saying that this is what should happen, but those other businesses that are in there could all pull in and.
Help replace the roof.
Help replace the roof. Of which the school districts would pay a pro-rata share of that building.
Yeah, I mean, typically if you're a owner of a building and you wanna establish like a sustainable rent schedule. And you have to build that in, you have to build capital structure costs into your rent schedule. And, you know, if, I understand Kate that you don't want to increase the, the rent anymore. But, you know, at some point you have to do the math and figure out what's, you know, going to work.
And we do have cost pools for each building to take into account capital improvements. However, we wanna leverage this or fund, grant funding them out of about a half million dollars.
Yeah, I, I guess the only thing about the west building from my perspective is that, you know, the roof would be helping out. You know, all the fifteen or sixteen or whatever entities. But that's not necessarily what our objective is right here and now. Maybe we could say one sixteenth of the roof is relatable to what, what our interest is with the current technical education. But not the whole roof.
Right, I mean theoretically, we could say, look, let's fund the Grand County School District Program. Table the Community Resource Center. Work with Megan and the EDA and the Rural County Competitive Grant Program. And really build out a small business program that takes care of our entrepreneurs. And take care of our high school students now before the school year starts. Is one possible approach?
Okay, here comes body language, go, say words. I, I don't wanna give any weight to things I've been told or heard without confirmation. But like, I'm under the impression that, that this project, while I have been a huge fan of it from the beginning.
Which project? The, this one or the?
No, the Moab Community Resource Center, like, what the, what the pre-health clinic is for trying to accomplish with those older buildings. Like, I have been a fan of this project from the get-go. We did give them their full grant last year. Um, I do know that they have some really good financing that's at zero percent that they've had access to. And, and at this point, I do have some concerns, having not looked at the books, I don't know, but I do have some concerns about like. Management of funds a little bit on, if we're still needing this much just to make it operational. When I know how many funds have already gone into it, I, I just, I have concern about if, how, how long this can maintain. Um, if, that, that's my, that was, I'm sorry.
It is to be operational. We did go through about one point five million dollars worth of renovations. In the last six months, and that was to get the buildings to be usable for the organizations. Um, that we have on the campus, which is seventeen org- organizations. Um, renovations aren't cheap. Um, we were very careful with our project management and had a dedicated person and team. For the project.
I think what I worry about a little, because I think all of us in this room have been in this situation, either on this side of it or on this side of it. I worry about, and I'm backpedaling now, so I'm acknowledging that I'm backpedaling. I'm worried about under-resourcing initiatives where we get them almost close enough to get something there. And I feel like if we have the time to dig into the Resource Center. And really building that out in partnership with USU and the Small Business Program and working closely with Megan. We have so many financial options, like I found lots of them, really, really good, solid ones. What I'm not finding, which is why I did wanna talk to Kari, is not finding a ton for schools. So if we give them a hundred thousand, it feels generous, like, oh, okay, that's a good number. If it's not the number that they're needing, they're asking for, or they're requesting, and we're saying it's in alignment with what we wanna accomplish. With economic development, diversification in our county. Are we gonna set them up for failure by under-resourcing? Maybe we should take the one project that we know that we can reasonably build out a plan and a program around if we take our time. And resource fully the one that may not have additional options that we feel is a priority, could be a way to go.
Which is the one you feel might not have around just.
The school. I, I, it just, I'm not finding a ton, that doesn't mean there aren't, and I am tenacious. So I will continue digging, I'm just, I'm not coming up with a lot. But on the other side of things with coworking space and entrepreneur space, finding an abundance of that.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, it sounds like the, uh, rural county grant program, you know, could potentially. You know, spot that pretty well, the south of the coworking space. But Kate, it sounds to me like with the roof, the, the idea kinda revolves around getting the solar panels up there. So you could recreate fertility rates, is that sort of the, the general gist of it?
Yes, and keeping operations, um, operational expenses low.
So, but it's not like if you don't do that, that the school can't move in and do their thing.
No, there are already about fifteen organizations in that building.
Yeah, so it's not, the roof thing is not, it's not essential. To, you know, to implement that, that school program there.
No, it's not essential for implementing that program.
But Kate, have you already committed? Cause I mean, I've already, I've seen ads with Rocky Mountain Power that they have given you. Ex amount of hundreds of thousands of dollars for a solar array, and I, I mean, what? What's the, are you on the hook with them? I mean, what does that look like?
So the solar panels can technically go up, but then we're gonna have to take them down in a couple of years. To re-roof, which will be additional expenses just to take it down, all the cost of labor.
So they're going up regardless?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any chance that you guys are gonna build a second story? I mean, are you looking for funding to, to do that? I mean, I.
I'm not sure about the structural integrity to, um, put another story on those buildings, so I can't.
Kate, what are you guys talking per square foot or rental?
So it's on a sliding scale. Non-profits are at the lowest rate of one point six. Dollars a square foot, and then our highest rate is two dollars a square foot for governmental agencies.
So, um, Melissa, you said that you don't wanna start something, um, underfunded?
I worry about it a little, cause I've seen it happen a lot where you're almost where you need to be. And then the program fails, and it's not necessarily, it can be, not necessarily because it wasn't a good program or the planning. Or the administration or the execution wasn't great, it's just because you almost had enough funds to get you there.
And that, that's what happened with the RAP grant here, that the city was running, which is, you know, that people would get twenty percent of the amount. That they, uh, requested, and therefore they couldn't do the project at all. I guess I'm, my inclination, my personal inclination would be to go ahead and fund the Student Success Center. Fully, or two hundred thousand rather than a hundred thousand. Confident that, under the leadership that will be guiding it, it will demonstrate its success. And therefore be able to secure stronger funding from the school itself. Now, that's, that's only ninety percent objective. But, um, I see what could be done, and I see what kind of leadership Kari provides. But that may give other people heartburn.
Are we willing to reduce, let's go into the rotated loan, loan fund? To, to, like, cause I, I, that was like my number one, the, the student resource center was like, yes. Like, I want that project funded.
Unspecified loan fund.
It's still revolving.
And for that one, to me, that's what I meant when I said philosophically, instead of assigning a number. What the number is for me is whatever we feel like we have.
But I do think if we don't fund it to a certain amount, it becomes not like, there's no power to it.
I think, when Megan was talking about, you know, maybe let's put together some kind of a calculation about what the average ask is. For those funds, and then how many people typically need to have access for them, I think that that would go in that TBD while we wait for some answers back from. Megan.
I would rather fund the school and the Wildcat microfund position over the revolving loan fund, but. I know that's not always.
Well.
Philosophically, I am with you on that.
According to my tally, which could be incorrect, we have a hundred for the SBDC. Two fifty for the as-yet unnamed loan fund. If we follow the recommendation of two hundred for the Student Success Center. And then forty for the Wildcat position.
Would you only do it one year? It would need to be eighty thousand for that microcap.
For two years.
Like she's saying, she would really struggle.
Could we ask Megan if she's still with us? I mean, maybe we'll find the money to do it all, and that would be amazing, but if there was, if there was a hundred and twenty K for the Wildcat Fund, three years funding for it. Versus one hundred K to extend the, the SBDC position, I mean, what, what should we prioritize there?
I agree.
One question.
Cause it's a part-time position, I think it'd be difficult to hold the, hold one person in that part-time position in Moab. Um, and so I would say the priority would be the additional funding for the SBDC position. And then we would work hard on these other grants to put a full-time. Wildcat microfund person, um, in the region, so that we maintain one person long-term, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I, I really wanna fund the Wildcat Fund, but if it's not going to be sustainable, then we ought to follow that recommendation. I, I think we have to listen to Megan's advice on that.
I'm hoping that Kima can get and hit the ground running, and that she can learn the systems and things like that quickly. And depending on her schedule, we can start opening up that Wildcat Fund. Based on, on what the workload looks like, um, as she gets going. Cause I'll start handing businesses and things like that off to her. Um, and depending on what that looks like, we can maybe open that up just with that full-time position. But, um, we'll, we'll see what that looks like too, that's another option.
So are we recommending to fund the whole project for the current technical? Education Student Center?
I was just running it to two hundred.
I'm good with either number, I mean, I go on two hundred. Twenty-one thousand is a lot more.
So are we, it, it sounds like there's consensus now to fund the entire ask for the current technical education? Is that what you just said?
Is that the consent? But I think that's a consensus. Melissa? Chris?
Yeah.
Okay.
Karen? Karen?
I just, I, um. It's, the program's gonna happen, but, but out our help, um, and giving it a hundred thousand dollars is, is. A, a lot, I mean, I would, I would.
Are we sure it's gonna happen without?
Kari said it's happening regardless.
Kari said she will keep it happening. Kari doesn't wanna cough up the extra hundred K personally. Kari doesn't have it personally, but, and, and Melissa is not wrong in that it is difficult to. Funding, let's find funding sources, and so, but I'm committed to our students in the district.
But, and Kari, the, the, the school district, the school board has also committed, is that correct, that it's gonna be operational? By the fall?
Yes, they've committed to front the money so that we can begin operations in the fall.
Okay.
But do you, do, would you rather us just do a hundred than Karen?
I, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying, yes, a half of that. A half of what the, what the ask is.
Do we wanna revisit that one when we get through the rest of the list, or do we wanna call it half?
I, you guys. Can make that call.
Let's leave it, and then when we get to that.
Um, I'll just say, I, I wasn't sure how long this would run, I do have to go soon, I'm so sorry. Um, and I don't know how I could have this meeting can happen without me, so at the risk of asking people to hurry up.
For the Star Grant, we did three days of Zoom calls, four days of Zoom calls tonight.
Wrong number five, Ben!
Like, I literally don't.
It's okay, I'm hearing that.
You want me to take notes?
It, it's really just the, the running of the technology. Anyways, keep going, please.
On that note.
What was the next number?
Well, even I can prevent it.
You guys were discussing the. You, the whatever, community resource center.
I, I lean towards not wanting to fund this project.
Which one?
The. Free health clinic, community resource center.
Number one?
Yeah, that's where we're, where we left off.
We're only at one?
The number one priority ranked fifth in the. Fourth, fourth, no, not, Lord, never mind.
So, um, I have a logistical concern, and like Ben, I have to leave in a few minutes. So, um, Karen, as vice chair of the board, you have the prerogative. To defer that to Shailly who is in the room.
We may not have enough corn.
We got twenty-eight left, just finish it, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
But so, were you guys though gonna reduce the revolving loan fund amount?
Yeah, we were talking about doing that if, I'm having that be our slash fund, but.
Slash funds.
I don't think that that's for mine. We need ten thousand dollars for this party.
Uh, loan fund?
Yeah, that's, that's a question.
Is there any, okay, so we feel like the wildcat micro fund, maybe it doesn't need to be a priority. Like, if we, can we just like do some quick yes, no's? Okay, does anyone feel like Moab community, we're just gonna do number one, Moab Community Resource Center? Yes, no?
I would table it for other resourcing and help them get it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I lost my notes, this small business development center, we're talking about a hundred K.
Yep, a hundred K, is there any other, I know you brought up charter service and arts administrator?
No, I, I already said I'm not gonna keep talking, we're out of time.
I, I, I feel pretty strongly about Redtail Air. Only because I agree, like, us not having that does, I feel like cut us off from our capital, I really struggle not. Supporting that, especially when they're willing to match it. They are taking a risk that they're guaranteeing these flights, even if we, the seats are never sold, so that's quite a bit of money that they're. Putting on the line as well. Like, if we have anything to give them, that would be my next big project on this list.
What, um, can I ask what the funds they received for the Star Grant, what was it used for?
Yeah, great, great question, Karen, so, um, we have employee housing, um, in Spanish Valley. And our proposal is to, we have a house, or bedroom house, or RV spots. Our proposal was to expand that from four RV spots to eight RV spots. Um, just last week, we got a proposal from a contractor in town to do the infrastructure for that, water, sewer, electric. Um, so, yes, that, that was the, the twenty thousand dollars to, to add four more employee housing spots. Which we, we desperately need, there's this nowhere, nowhere in hell for our seasonal employees on, to live.
So, we're at, if we, the, the funding for the career technical education center. And for the uh, SBDC, there's two hundred and eighty K left. I mean, my, my own opinion would be that that should go to the revolving loan fund. But I think that for anyone who wants to fund something else, I mean, you have to feel strongly enough about it that. You're comfortable putting a smaller amount in to the revolving loan fund in that same amount of, whatever, full amount of dollars. And so, I mean, I think that's, that's essentially where we're at.
I think even just a portion, even if we're not funding the whole ninety-five thousand for Redtail. Even a portion of, of like fifty thousand for me. That's, that's encouraging businesses that are putting their butts on the line for our community, that's how I mean.
Actually, they're putting our butts.
They're putting our butts on the line. They're telling.
I agree, and I think, but I always go for the ninety, ninety, ninety-five.
And then the rest goes into the unspecified loan fund?
Yeah.
Any arguments?
Yeah, I'm gonna um, oppose this, this, the suggestion, again, it's, this is private enterprise. It's like a shuttle company, I mean, I, are you, yes, you're guaranteeing spots, but. I would have liked to get some historical context on how many seats were actually sold, I mean, they, their, their proposal was only for locals. And I think there's very, very few locals who are gonna use this service. And um, and for us, for the whole, our tax revenue to subsidize it is, um, is quite a bit. Especially since we already have an EAS service, I know that it's changed and it's now moved to Phoenix, but. Um, the federal government looks at these proposals very seriously, um, so, a- again, I, not that I don't. I'm an aviator myself, but I just, I really feel like this should be a private. Like, if they think it's gonna fly, then they need to try it out. And maybe do a three-month, like in the high season, even though they don't wanna serve tourists, um, and that's who. Used our flight services before, so.
There, this is a total one-off that probably could not work, but let's say they were successful and they made all the money. Could we ask that they then put into the unspecified loan, that amount?
Be happy that works.
Okay, is that something we could do?
Incredibly successful.
If it's successful, like, could we do that?
And Karen, to address your concern a little bit earlier about eight, eight seats or possibly less in the summertime. Uh, we've got three Kodiaks, and uh, if we find that the band is there, um, we'll, we'll add a second. We'll add a second flight per day, or a second aircraft per day, um, or even up to a third aircraft a day, so. Yeah, yeah, and, and Shailly, yeah, we'd be very open to some sort of uh. If this thing is incredibly successful, okay, um, and we hit certain revenue targets, sharing that, that revenue would come.
What?
Has there been any discussion with, um, with Delta, uh? So, United Express, and, or with Great Lakes, and, or with boutique, I mean, I, I mean, it really.
Yes, is like, like the airport board has had extensive conversations with, with them, they, there's just two, there's a big giant wall that keeps getting hit. With SkyWest can't find pilots.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just talking, the, the, logistically, the numbers, the loads, like what? Were the numbers, and what, what are the numbers for local participation, I'm just, that's. And there's so many people who already have, like, flying phobias to get in a Kodiak, and. I mean, I know they're sturdy lovely air, aircraft, but I just, again. Would like to be prudent in the money that we're spending.
Maybe we should just do, start voting, like doing some straw polls, so we can get out of here.
All right, uh, okay, so of the forum that's here, I guess.
Actually, we might need to check that.
Do we have a quorum?
Four, five, we have five members.
What are you, what's your total?
Seven.
Voting members or?
Yeah. Quorum can be a voting or non-voting members, but it has to be, I believe, half of the total membership.
How many, what's your total?
I think it's fourteen.
Fourteen?
It's a big board, maybe it's not fourteen, maybe.
I think we have a quorum with five.
Let's just get it done and not worry about that.
Yeah.
Don't look, Stephen, don't look.
Okay, so, um. Those in favor of doing it? I don't know, Karen's way? It's not Karen's way. Uh, and Chris, of, of funding the loan and not funding.
Well, let's just find out who supports funding Redtail right now.
Okay, all those in favor of supporting Redtail?
But Forrest wants to support her.
But Forrest said he wanted to.
Either way. We have to reach a consensus, I'm willing to help.
Because of clarifying point.
I'm not sure.
Since we're just making recommendations for the economics development board to take to the grant. Making the final decision. It's sort of like Chris having that information is good enough theoretically.
A split, a split recommendation on.
Look at your pain face.
Funding Redtail versus.
Legal counsel looks pained.
Can they just provide a motion that says, we recommend considering the following proposals, and just, just include the ones that you liked?
I mean, I think what we could do, put forward a motion with a recommendation to fund. The thing, you know, in the order that we talked about it, I mean, full funding for the career technical center, a hundred thousand dollars of funding for the SBDC. The remaining funding going to a revolving loan with half of the board members supporting an amount being subtracted for that. To support Redtail and the other half not, so we leave that decision to the commission with the open recommendation that it's, it's.
I think you just made a motion.
You could, I mean, you could also, I think, just, you know, list out what you do wanna fund, uh, and then just say contingent upon the. Resources being available, and so, maybe we go over six, maybe we go over six hundred thousand.
We are super successful, my request would be that we come up with a plan that Redtail would then potentially help us fund. More towards the revolving.
So we could put that on the, you guys. So we could put that on the list, but maybe it'd be at the bottom.
Let's know. Yeah.
Okay.
So who writes up all these notes for the recommendation? Just quickly, secondary, so, me?
I don't know, who has the minutes?
I, I'm, I was told I didn't have to do the minutes, but.
So, so usually staff does the minutes for the purposes of getting a commission, uh, item. Done by tomorrow night, it sounds like it's gonna be me, so I will do it, I have not been taking notes because we're recording.
All right, so you made a motion, I heard it, we got a second. Okay, all those in favor of those?
Please say the motion again, I don't even know what it is.
Right, so Chris made a motion that we are funding. The career and technical education student career and success center in full funding to twenty-one, five hundred. We are funding one more year of the senior business consultant salary and benefits for another hundred thousand.
And that remaining funds.
And the remaining funds are going to support the revolving, an unspecified revolving loan fund that we haven't decided which one. And half the board is in support of funding, full funding for Redtail Air. With, with a note of the other half that not supported, but. More specifically, that Redtail is more than willing to put in an agreement that if they do. Not, if they're not out that money, that they will then put it in the revolving. Could they, could they actually apply for the revolving loan fund?
So, here's, here's what's gonna happen, so the, the motion needs to be a clear recommendation, so we'll say the motion is. For those three dollar recommendations, all for proposal number four, half for proposal number two. And the remaining funds go to the loan fund, now make sure that when I submit the item, I also indicate and link. Mission members to the YouTube video, that there was significant discussion about funding Redtail's proposal, were they to enter into some agreement where, you know. Uh, capital could go back into a revolving loan fund, which they were very open to working out with us.
Perfect.
And I, I will say, that does, the idea of having them contingent, it's going to put a lot of effort and work. For the county to structure a deal like that, so I don't want, when, when I go in publicly, if that comes up, I will probably advise against it. Cause it's going to be a nightmare of trying to hit.
The part of our legal counsel prepared their document for your review.
There could be, that, that would work, but it's just more work, to make this process easier. Writing a check for the amount of money is so much easier than writing a check continued on seventeen things that we have to follow up on, so I just, I don't want any, that to be a surprise.
Really fastest two-second overview I would ever give.
Have we passed the motion?
No, no, we haven't.
Are we, can we do that first, or do we have to, I mean, if, if you need to say something first, please do, but I just want us to make sure to the motion.
When we have a motion on the table, you typically cannot discuss until there's a second or it fails.
We do have a second.
I don't think we can move forward with the motion though, because part of the motion was still the discussion about Redtail. So maybe remake the motion that is only about the things that are funded.
So Ben, so, Ben, Ben restated the motion, here's, if, if this is what you guys want, here's my recommendation, I would make a recommendation. To do proposal number two at one hundred thousand, proposal number five at two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred. And then the final proposal is to put the remainder in the unspecified loan fund, whether it's revolving or not. That's the, that's the recommendation, period. However, you would like on the, on, so that's, that's one piece, that's your recommendation. Cause you guys don't have sufficient to fully recommend the airport board, but you could say. In the discussions, and you do the, the agenda write-up, in the discussions. There was considerable support for Redtail, however, there was not the unanimous or majority support for this, and you could write it out. That does your three, that's clean, it's unanimous, it seems like, and then it puts Red, uh, Redtail on radar. Redtail can go, make a public comment, you guys can go, make a public comment, that's probably the cleanest with what we have now. And then the other thing to know is, we don't know if, if exactly the amount of funds that we've allocated now. Are there, but if you give your priority number one, two, three, asterisk Redtail, I think that's sufficient. So that's, that's my recommendation, if that's what you guys want to do.
Why don't we ask the county attorney to be for it?
And if I clarify, the, the way clarified the motion, they could just vote.
Yeah, I think, I think you guys are fine, he restated it, funding in, in this specific order, proposal two. Proposal five, sorry, that one's harder to read, and then the revolving unspecified loan fund as the, as the top three.
And so all the, do we have a second from Lisa?
Somebody has to make that motion. I make the motion that we support what Stephen just stated, we stay. Full funding for the career technical education student center, uh, a hundred thousand to the SBDC. Remaining funding to a loan fund. Is there, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Karen, are you in favor?
No.
Those opposed? Did you want more discussion?
There was just the, the amount for the, um, career technical position. I was, I was going for half of what they, what they asked.
So half is a bad, three to one?
You guys are happy with it?
I think we're happy with it being noted.
And if, and if it's not, I will, I will inform them if, you know, sufficiently that, yes, there was discussion about Redtail. And also note, um, Karen's point as well.
Any future agenda items? Okay, thanks so much for everyone's hard work, we are going to adjourn at five forty-four.